Welcome to another episode of Crawfordsville Connection, the city of Crawfordsville's weekly podcast that comes out every Monday morning. I'm your host, Sarah Summer, and I'm joined in the studio every week with Mayor Todd Barton to keep our community up to date on current events, city workings, and to hear from community members on a variety of topics. Thank you so much for joining us and we hope you enjoy the show. Welcome back to another episode of Crawfordsville Connection. I'm your host, Sarah Summer, and today I'm joined in the studio by Mayor Todd Barton.
Hello.
Hello, how are you?
Good, back again.
Yes, we are.
That's right.
Recording twice in one week.
Yeah.
Yes. And with us today, we have Dan Gard and Jake Bollander from the Montgomery County Commissioners. And before we get started with them though, Mayor, do you have any announcements?
Couple of things, I know this comes out on Monday morning, just want to remind everyone that Monday is Martin Luther King Jr. Day. So the city offices are closed and there will be no trash pickup on Monday, and we'll do a double trash pickup on Tuesday. Then also remind everybody, I'll have a community forum on Monday, January 27th from four to five PM here in the mayor's office.
Yes, come talk, ask questions.
Something on your mind, you have questions, suggestions, whatever.
Yeah.
I anticipate questions about the Market Street announcement. So if you have questions about that, come see me and we'll, I'll help you through it.
Awesome. Well, I will just go ahead and kick it over to you, Jake and Dan. Thank you both for being here. And we'll start off with Jake, if you want to introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about who you are and what your role is with the county.
Thank you. As you said, I'm Jake Bollander, born and raised in the county, north of Darlington on a hog farms where I grew up. Went to North Montgomery, from there I went to Purdue. Currently, I'm in the seed business. I own a pioneer seed agency, which is located in the northeast part of the county. Been married to my wife Morgan for six years. We live just south of Darlington at Rocky Ridge. We just had our first baby about a month ago, Maggie J is her name. My current involvement with our, our local government is, I was on our county council for four years and the district opened in our, my commissioner district and ran for commissioner and then two weeks in the job, so.
Awesome.
Newly sworn in commissioner and a new baby all at the same time.
Yes, yes. Busy life.
Some sleepless nights, right?
Yep, it's been, been busy. My schedule's still a little, little off.
Yes. And Dan, tell us a little bit about who you are and what your involvement is with the county.
Good afternoon. Thanks for the invite. My name is Dan Gard and I'm a commissioner as well. And I too am from the county, grew up here, was born and raised, lived in Linden all my life. Currently, I own Lawn Guard, which is a lawn maintenance company here in town. This is my actually 21st year of owning that.
Wow.
My wife is, my wife Stacy, she's I think in her 32nd year of teaching seventh grade science at the middle school here in town. So we've got two adult kids and a couple of grand boys doing well.
Awesome. Well, thank you both for being here. We'll just go ahead and move right into talking about what the county commissioners' role is. What are your primary responsibilities? What do you do in the day to day? And what does that look like for somebody who has no idea?
Well, I'll take a shot at it. So the commissioners would be similar to what the, the mayor would be for the city, the commissioner. We are the legislative and the executive body of, of the county. And Jake is experienced in the council side of it, and they handle all of the, the financial, the fiscal portion of the county. So we, we have several departments that we oversee, the county highway department, we have department heads, we maintain all of our buildings. And we also make policy for the county on a day to day basis. It just varies. Here recently, it's been communicating and dealing with snow.
Yes, lots of snow.
Yeah, no, we've talked about this before, but you know, on the county side, the commissioners are both the legislative and administrative sides of government.
Right.
You know, where on the city side, we're just administrative, the legislative goes to the council.
Yes.
A little different on the county side of things.
Yeah. So how would you say that the commissioners impact the residents of Montgomery County? What is your role with, you know, regards to their actual residents outside of your day to day administrative tasks?
I think to Dan's comment earlier, I mean, the last week's been a lot of, you know, snow removal and the roads to get to work, to school, save. That's been the biggest part of my first two weeks. I actually spent some time with Jake riding in a plow truck this week. That was exciting to see what, you know, the challenges and what, what he does in his department. But Dan, do you want to, anything you want to touch on?
Well, and recently, we did our reorganization and make appointments. So I'm the president of the commission. Jim Fullwider is the vice president, and then Jake always also serves with us. But we also make appointments to other boards. So for example, we, we have a county plan commission, we have a drainage board. There's probably about 15 or 16 boards, I can't remember. And so we're actively appointing people, looking for people that are interested in serving in, in any capacity that would help us in those areas.
Awesome.
And you know, like all local government, the things they're doing directly affects your lives.
Right.
It's the things you see. I think everybody gets caught up in the national politics or state politics, but it's, it's what's happening here that's going to affect you the most.
Absolutely.
The decisions they're making about roads or how something's going to be zoned. I mean, that has a direct impact on, on your lives.
Yeah. And you know, Mayor, I know we talk a lot about the collaboration that we have in this community. How would you say that, you know, the mayor's office and Mayor, you yourself, work and collaborate with the county and the county commissioners?
Yeah, I think it works really well here, and I think that stands out, you know, to, to a lot of other communities around the state. I mean, I tell people this and you know, there's rarely a day that goes by that I don't communicate with somebody. You know, one of the commissioners or Tom in the commissioner's office, I mean, we're, we're constantly in a communication and working back and forth because, you know, what we do is very similar and sometimes it overlaps, sometimes it's a little different, but you know, it makes sense to pool our resources in the size of community. You know, look at the 911 center, for example. Look at how we handle solid waste, look at all those things. It just makes sense if we pool our resources and worked, worked together collectively, and that's what we've been doing here for quite some time.
Right. And, and we've talked about this too. Sometimes the residents who live in our community don't actually know the differentiation.
They don't know and largely don't care, right? You know, they just want to know that it's getting done and it's not going to cost them, you know, too much to get it done.
Yeah, you know, some people are, okay, I live in Crawfordsville, but really it's, it's Montgomery County or, or vice versa.
Right.
They just focus on, I'm from Montgomery County rather than.
Yeah, that's very confusing. I get that a lot of people, you know, they have a Crawfordville address and they think they're part of the city and they're not.
Right.
You know, so it's figuring out those unincorporated areas, just like snow removal you're talking about. I mean, where are those lines and how do we coordinate all that so that it all gets done properly and we don't duplicate efforts or, or miss areas and all those kinds of things.
Yeah. And Jake, you talked about, you know, you came from the county council. How does that differ from the commissioners' role?
Yep. So on the council, we're strictly the funds, so tax rates, how many positions the county decides that we need to operate, what the salaries are for those. So yeah, just all, all the money parts of it, you know, same as commission. You know, there's some boards that we also are, are appointed to and help serve on. But yeah, with the commissioners being the executive lecturers aside, yeah, we didn't necessarily get in that on the county side, but it's nice to have good communication between the commissioners and the council to just make sure we're all going in the same direction and it's what people want.
Yeah, absolutely. How would you say that the two different bodies collaborate and work together?
I don't know, recent, Dan, do you have anything that stands out in your mind?
Well, coming up, we try to, once a year, and we have it coming up, is we'll have a workshop. First of all, the commissioners will have a workshop in bringing the department heads, go over some goals, previous goals, achievements, what we're still working on, the direction we want to go, just talk about projects that we see coming up that we're addressing, we prioritize those. That keeps the department heads in the loop.
Right.
Then we will also, on a separate day, invite and collaborate with the council as well. It's important for the council being responsible for the money aspect of what we're doing to keep them well informed, helps them budget, gives them an idea, not just for this year, but you know, three, five, seven, 10 years down the road.
Right.
Projects and what, a vision and a direction that we're going. So there's, it just keeps the line of communication very open.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I would say too, on council is, no one wants to raise taxes, but everybody wants better services and wants good quality of life. So you know, how do we work together, work with the city to make sure we're growing the tax base, we're doing positive things. So everyone still gets those services, have good quality of life, and it's not terribly expensive to live in the community.
Just in a meeting this morning, virtual meeting with other cities around the state, talking about things in the legislature and you know, it's, it's the same story over and over every time. Like, you know, we need to cut taxes and we're all faced with the fact that the citizens demand more and more services.
Right.
You know, figure out how to equate that is not easy most of the time.
And those services aren't getting any cheaper.
It costs more to provide, even if we kept services flat, it costs more and more to provide them. So yeah, challenging to figure all that out. But I think the county's in the same situation we are, is that we've got a good council, you know, and that's what's really helped us on the city side. And I think that helps the county as well. You know, you have people on the county council who want a better community, right? And just how do we get there and how do we make it possible?
Absolutely. Jake, for you, what made you decide to run for commissioner and, you know, leave the council role?
I, I really enjoyed my role on council. I learned a lot about how government works because it, it's nothing like a business. Just with how different funds, how you, just how you can do things and invest into your community, it's, that's very different. But also being involved in that, I think it'd been challenging to step into a commissioner role without having some sort of government experience. So, and I think the reason I got, I love the community, I want to see it continue forward. And I think there's just a lot of positive things going on. It's, it's, you know, it's a good time to be involved. So I am a younger commissioner. I think that does, you know, different perspective does, does bring, bring value and so, yeah.
Yep, we talk about that.
It's bringing down the average age of the commissioners, Dan.
I know.
Yeah. No, it's a challenge we all have, I think, is how do we start, you know, preparing those next generations for these roles? So hats off to you for running. That's awesome.
Yeah. Dan, for you, when you joined the commissioner role, you know, what, what made you decide to join and decide you wanted to serve the community in that way?
Well, it started back like in 2006, 2007, eight, got involved at the very, I guess, grassroots or ground entry level in, in the sense of asked the party chair at the time how to get involved. And so I became a precinct committee person.
Okay.
And did that for quite a long time. And then I was, I ran for city council and did two terms in the city on the city council, worked with the mayor for eight years, just shy of eight years. And when a position in my district came open, which was Phil Baines, I decided that I wanted, I wanted to be even more involved and, and being in the county. So been this, I just started my second full term of being a commissioner. I really enjoy it. It's, it's very involved, but I really do. I enjoy it because it just, I have, I feel like I have more of an impact in my vote or my decisions. And I'm here, I'm committed, I'll be, tomorrow will be, I'll be 54 tomorrow. I've been here all my life and I have no intentions of going anywhere. So I'm fully vested in the county. I'd really like to see it continue to do well. And we're in a really good spot right now.
That's awesome.
I was waiting to see if he's going to say the experience on the city council was so good, he wanted to do something else, or it was so bad, he had to get out of it. Wasn't sure which way he's going to go with that.
Well, you've talked a little bit about some of the projects that you have and you know, the county commissioners and the council have to be on the same page to be able to move those projects forward. Do you want to highlight some of the current projects that you're working on in the county?
Yeah, a few that stand out is that new core corridor on the east side of the county. I mean, that's our, that's where a lot of our economic development focus has been for the county. So with making sure those areas have water, sewer, they're shovel ready and it's neat you drive down there. I mean, it, there's just a lot of activity.
It's massive. If you've not been out there, drive it, go out there, take a look, it's, it's massive.
So a lot in that area, but you know, there's also an emphasis, we're bringing these jobs. We need people, people need places to live. So focus on making residential development a focus and working with the mayors that our, our goals align that for the community.
A couple that, well, speaking of new core corridor, the bridge that would span over 136 is a very big project, important project for any, well, just for the safety and overall potential growth on that, on that road. So we'll start to see some activity out there in the next year, into 26, 27, maybe into 28 to before it's completed. The courthouse project right now, you'll start to see some scaffolding and some work, business there, fixing roof and facade and some remodel on the inside. Just, that's just a brief overview of that. Proation Department, which is the building and justice building over by the old hospital. We're going to make that ADA compliant, spend some money on accessibility and be in compliance with ADA. So that project will be coming in, I believe, this year. And I drove by last night for the first time in a, in a few weeks. The early learning center, while that place is really coming around, that looks really sharp. So a lot, a lot of, a lot going on, not to even mention what we just collaborated with in Pearl Heart Parkway, that development down there. So things are really moving.
Yeah. And Mayor, we've talked about the, you know, the study for the community and moving forward in our general updates.
The alignment study on the south side. Yeah, that's, that's how you tie all this together, right? If you look at what we're doing and what they're doing and how we're doing it together, creating that roadmap for the next several decades. So this all aligns and all makes sense. You're going to see, you're going to continue to see quite a bit of growth, you know? So we have to kind of prepare for that and we don't want to be in a situation where it's reactive and nothing lines up and nothing matches. And we didn't think it through. So yeah, we're, we're on our way. We're, we've started that alignment study. And I think that's really going to give us a clear sense of, you know, how we can proceed in a, in an orderly fashion. It's not going to happen overnight by any means.
Not only that, if you don't have that, the initial layout and the study and the, and the thought process going forward and having an idea and a vision, if you're not ready for that, it makes it very difficult to even, even think about being considered for any state or federal funding.
Right.
As much as, yeah, hate to have to rely on that, it's a necessary evil to be prepared to get those fundings.
Yeah, I don't think people understand that. We just talked about that with the Market Street announcement, right? You, you have to do things to prepare, to apply for those, everyone thinks you just apply and you get these things. You, you have to have your ducks in a row and, or even projects, you know, if another big business comes or wants to come out to that area, we need to know how can we get sewer there? How can we get water there? What's involved? This study will do all that for us.
Right.
You know, so this is huge. I know Dan mentioned the New Core Overpass, that is what I call a game changer for that whole area and really the whole south side of Crawfordsville. It's going to change traffic flows and all that stuff. I do want to address a rumor that was on social media. We saw the last few days that the Market Street and the, they were comparing the Market Street project and the New Core Overpass and funding was shifting from one to the other. Those are very, those are totally different funding sources. One state's one federal, they're not interrelated at all, folks. So whoever's telling you that doesn't know what they're talking about. I'll just put that out there.
Yes, yes. Well, what are some of your future goals as commissioners, starting, you know, it's the new year. What are some of your goals as a commissioner for the community?
I think I touched on a little bit earlier, but you know, just the residential piece, I think that's important with all these, you know, we have an opportunity and we need, we need to capture it. And I think too, as we focus on some of, you know, the, making some of these highlighted areas for the county that makes sense for development to happen that, hey, we've done our due diligence. We, whether it's a road or it's infrastructure that we're prepared to take that on.
Right.
A couple of things. One, just probably funding for roads. Our, we as a county are, we're not where we want to be financially to be able to do all of the work a hundred percent that we, our goal is to do, or we feel like, well, not us, our highway director, Jake Low. So that's, that's his department. He does a really good job and he has a vision of, and what it would take every year over the course of the year to regravel roads and grade roads and fix roads and pave and, and apply for grants and stuff. And so we're not as a county where we need to be financially for that. And so my goal is to with our legislators to try to get any additional funding or to make that pitch to whoever, whomever we could, whether it's the council or the state, to try to bridge that gap of where we are and where we would like to be.
Right.
We're getting closer, but you know, a year ago, we were about $2 million a year shy in that budget to be able to do all the things we want to do. So it makes a difficult job for Jake because he's got to prioritize, knowing that he can't do all the things that he wants, would like to have done. So that's the first thing. And then the second thing is just to continue to, with those, our, our state legislator is to be a voice for local control and home rule. That is one of my pet peeves or sticking, stickler about is that I really feel it's important for us as a county and a city to have, be able to make the decisions that affect us that aren't dictated to us with the, you know, just like to make our own decisions.
Right.
To make that short.
Yes. So how can residents stay informed about what the county has going on?
One thing our county administrator does, Tom Klein, is he's done a really good job on social media, having a Facebook page, updating residents, whether it's road closures or projects, ribbon cuttings, whatever's going on in our community that people are aware of that. And I think that's been a really, a good thing. Of course, we, you know, have the paper and radio, but I think that social media presence is, has been a really positive thing.
Tom does a really good job of staying on top of that. And also we have, our, our website has, so if there's any information, a meeting that would pertain to you or affect you, you like to participate in that, you could, and those are listed on the county website. Like, for example, back to our meetings, we as commissioners meet the second and the fourth Monday at 8:00 AM at the government building north of town. The council meets the second Tuesday at 9:00 AM. And starting in July, the state is going to require us to have those, any meetings that we have in that room be televised through a stream, not really televised, but streamed. And so the county will have a YouTube channel for that that allow you to see those meetings. We have Jake and I both served, well, he, he did serve as the county council representative and I serve on the commissioner side of the Montgomery County sewer district. So we have a second Wednesday of the month at four o'clock, we have a meeting there. So starting in July, that meeting as well will be available and streamed, so.
Great. What would you say some of the challenges are that are, you know, Montgomery County is facing?
I guess our logistics where we are, we're just, it seems like we're just not close to anything. Sometimes that's a good thing. You get away from all the things that are busy, but when it comes to, I guess, growth or development, that too is good sometimes that that slows down to where you can control it. But logistics is sometimes where we are. They put us in these groups sometimes as counties and we're, it seems like we're either with Terre Haute or Indianapolis or Lafayette and we just don't align real well with that. And, but the main thing is, I guess, is with me is one of the being back, go back to our roads. Of all the, all the complaints, the voicemails, the text messages or the phone calls, as a commissioner, almost exclusively roads.
Yeah, okay. And what about some success stories? What are some of your favorite achievements? Jake, for you, you know, being involved with the council and Dan, for you as a commissioner?
I'd say on council, I mean, we did a salary study this last year and just tried to go through and make, make sure we're doing the right thing and compensation. And you know, because we are, you know, we're funded by the taxpayer, but we still are one of the largest employers in the county and we have a duty to treat employees.
Right.
Right. So that took a lot of time, last couple of years. I was proud to be on that board and with what we came up with. And I think in some of these projects we do and being new to planning and zoning, there was a meeting we had had and an individual came up and he, he's like, you know, I was very against this. And he said, now I get it. Like, I see what the county's doing, you're working with the city, stuff's starting to happen. I understand. So, and that was, that was encouraging.
I don't know if I have really anything that stands out. It just, it seems like it's always a work in progress. So even if you get this thing checked off or.
There's always more.
There's always more, there's always.
Never ends.
It's never ending. So it's, it's different. I've owned a business and it's, mine's a seasonal business. So at the end of the year, I can look back and say, wow, okay, this one need to do better. That went fast. Or we need to do it differently in this area. But with the commissioner side, it's just, it's fun to see the progress. It's fun to see a finished building or a finished road, a new this, a new that. But you know, our last three senses that we've had, we really haven't grown as a community population wise. And so it'll be neat when we start to grow that a little bit in a good, healthy way and we start to see maybe some, some new retail, new business.
And I think one thing too is, Mayor touched on earlier in our conversation, but not prior to the podcast, but just trying to make decisions data driven to where like our highway department now, you know, we have a scoring system on roads. And like Jake told me this week, he's like, you know, our scoring, like, we have a long way to go, but we're up a whole point. And you know, you, there's scoring, traffic patterns, road, you know, there's a lot of things that go into that. But moving in the positive direction is always a good thing. And when you have data to support that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it seems like that's what you really have to always fall back on that because you don't want to start make, just randomly making decisions on something because you want to be fair across the board and you want to use the same, you want to be able to say yes or no for the same reason.
Right.
And treat every situation and, and all that same.
Yeah. Like I always say, I don't decide which streets get paved. I really don't. You know, it's based on the data. The street commissioner looks at that data and makes a recommendation. We look at it, you know, and the same thing happens on the county side. It's, it's data.
Absolutely.
And we'll find out after the freeze and thaw that road that was.
You'll lose that point, I'm telling you.
Yeah. So it may have not been too shabby last fall and, and it would have, now all of a sudden it's worse and needs.
Right. And I think you guys are doing the same thing we are. We're using that, that system. We talked about that, you know, AI type system where they drive through and it assesses and it's, you know, it's not biased, it's going to, the computer does this. But now that we're using that, we can assess it multiple times a year, or before it was, it was once a year. Now we can go through every month if we want.
Yeah.
And assess those and understand what's happening in the different seasons. So, yeah.
That's awesome. Well, we've already talked a little bit about, you know, having community members attend those meetings, you know, reaching out to you, following you on social media, checking your website. What other ways can you see the community getting involved or how can they help, you know, how can the public help contribute to the county's success?
Helping us fill committees or, or to be, to sit in on a board and participate in that, in that way, to be, be active in that.
Yeah, get involved. I think it's the same thing on our side, right? You know, like Dan said, get involved, start serving, you know, and, and see what, what interests you. I think the other important thing on every side of this is if, if you're in favor of things, speak up.
Yeah.
Because I guarantee you, the people who are not, and they might be a very small minority in the community, they're going to be loud, very loud about their opposition to something. So as an elected official, you're trying to sort that out. It's important that you hear from the people who, who are in favor of something as well. So you know, don't, I think, don't just assume like, yeah, that's a good thing and they're going to just do that. You know, they're hearing from other people who want that. That may not be the case, you know?
Yeah.
Speak up and communicate with your elected official, city, county, whatever, if you're in favor of something, not just opposed, but in favor.
I agree.
You know, lots of people, it's like, you know, it's like the city council, I mean, you walk in and there's nobody there, you know? Or if everybody who shows up is opposed to something, you know, they might show up, but you know, if you're in favor of it, show up as well.
Yeah, you pull up in front of the building and the parking lot's full and their car's way down the street, you're like, whoa.
Yeah, what's on the agenda here today? So yeah, it's, yeah, get involved, you know? And if you want the, if you want a good community, you want a better community, speak up about that.
Yes.
Because I can tell you, the people who don't want any of that stuff are going to speak up.
Absolutely. So if you have people who are wanting to get involved or reach out to, you know, give suggestions and give that feedback, what is the best way for them to contact you all as commissioners?
We, we have a full-time administrative assistant, Lori Dossett in her office. She's usually accessible, I have a phone in there to call. That's usually the best way. And then, you know, depending on what the issue is, she could direct you to one of us three commissioners.
Awesome. And I can put her contact information in the show notes, so people can find that phone number right there. And I'll add a link to the county's website as well, so it's easy for people to find.
She'll get you the right direction. She's been there how long now? She's, she predates all the current commissioners.
She does. And she has a mind like a steel trap. She remembers everything. Recall, she can recall back just without like even the minutes or notes from a meeting or some policy or something that changed.
A lot of institutional knowledge there. So she could, she'll get you pointed in the right direction.
That's awesome.
She went, she was recognized last year at our commissioners' conference in Indianapolis and, and got the. Yeah, outstanding, very, very well deserved too. So she was recognized at the state level by the Indiana Commissioners Conference.
That's awesome.
So of all 92 counties, she stood out.
That's pretty impressive.
Well deserved.
Yep.
Awesome. Well, thank you both so much. Is there anything else that you'd like to add for our listeners?
I just, thanks for the invite. I've not done this before, so this, this is pretty neat.
We do it all the time. You're always welcome to come back. Tom comes on and does a county general update every once in a while. So, yeah.
Well, again, I appreciate it and yeah, I'm two weeks in the role and I'm, I'm excited.
Yes, we'll have you back. You know, we'll do an update and see, see how things are moving.
Definitely.
Awesome. Thanks, Sarah.
Thanks a bunch.
Yes, thank you so much for listening. And as always, if you have topics or things you'd like to hear about. Yes, thank you so much for listening. And as always, if you have topics or things you'd like to hear about, reach out and let us know. And we will make notes and see what we can do to get guests on. And don't forget about Yodle, our community calendar and news feed to find out all things happening right here in Crawfordsville. Thanks for listening and we'll see you next week. Make sure you hit the subscribe button on this podcast so you never miss an episode. And if you aren't already, follow us on Facebook at City of Crawfordsville Official. On Twitter at City of Seaville and on Instagram at City of Crawfordsville. We hope you have a wonderful day and can't wait for you to join us next week.